We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take your call.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore. Ms. Pace-Snoke.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seibacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stone.
Present.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Thank you. We have Pastor Bruce Williams here to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, I am grateful on behalf of our community and our home to give you thanks for those that serve this community at every level, in our city, Lord, our administrators and department heads, and all of those that work on our streets, our public safety officers, fire and police, and all those that make our life at peace and a presence of joy each day. I want to remember the firefighters injured in Farmington, Maine, yesterday, five critically and one killed in action, and two police officers shot in America today, New York and Georgia. This could be any nation in the world, any city in our nation. Lord, I pray for those that have fallen, and I pray, Lord, for strength for our servants and for those that serve the people all across this country. I pray for our men and women in uniform who serve this nation, defend the Constitution and the flag. Very difficult and dangerous time for them, especially serving in the Middle East. We're free because of the likes of all of this and these throughout our history. I'm really grateful for the participation in this session tonight. Our gallery is nearly full, and I'm grateful for those who participate in the city's life, work and business. I pray for this session tonight for our mayor and councilpersons and administrators as this session is held, and I pray for the public's participation. It adds much to the life and work of our community. I continue to pray for those who are part of the city family who need your daily care and maintenance. That would include Chief Kowelk, Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and anyone else within our city family who needs your touch each day. I ask your blessings on this session and all who share, those who lead it, and the discussions and decisions that are made, that they be pleasing to you. We pray all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag.
Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, at this time, we will accept comments from visitors. If you would limit your comments to five minutes or less and give us your name and I think we know this guy.
My name's Richard Vaughn. I live at 1416 Geese Drive in here in town. I'm here tonight to urge the city council to support the upcoming vote on the new rec center. I participated in part of that. We had the citizens voice their opinion on that and vote for a part tax, and I thank the council for its support, that vote that we had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I knew we would see you.
My name's Chris Garrett. I live at 1009 West Avenue here in Fulton, Missouri. I currently serve as chairman of the park advisory board, and I'm just here today to thank this council, administration, the park board, the work from the park and rec department, specialist director, for all the tireless effort and everything else that's gone into it. There's been a lot of work, a lot of time that's gone into that, and a lot of sacrifices. And I just wanted to say thank you to all those that have supported that, and of course, we urge that we get this pushed through tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would wish to say a few words?
I'm Wanda Jane Hall, and I live at 150 King Street in Fulton. I've moved to Fulton 53 years ago and passed, and I'm not a Calawagian, but I've always thought that the best thing that ever happened to Fulton in all the time that I was here and all the time in my 39 years in teaching for the city of Fulton was the building of this city hall. Because I watched all the changes that went through and all the arguments they had and everything that went through to building this, and I was always so proud to bring my classroom through and to tour it and to let... And this council should be so proud of that accomplishment. So I am here tonight to see if you will begin another great and important project, which is the Community Recreational Center and also the softball-baseball complex, which has a dear meaning to me. I have served on the Parks and Recreation Board for, I think it's 22 to 23 years now. That's longer than I've served on anything else, on committees, and I did that because I love kids and I wanted to work for their recreational needs and to see the things. So in those 23 years, lots of projects and proposals have come up through the park board and been presented, but this is truly the most important one, and it means the most. The part of the baseball complex, one of the reasons I stayed on the park board is because if it's in its present plan, will be in my front yard. Literally, I walk out of my front yard and the ballpark begins, and I want to see in my lifetime, hopefully, that accomplished. And I think if you vote tonight to start moving the dirt, that would be a move in the right direction, and I could look out my window every morning and watch and see. It's really important, all these projects, and most of the people I've talked to have said, money is the big important issue. But I look at all the things that the council has accomplished in the past. Some of the people didn't want a golf course, and now we have Tanglewood, and it's almost home free, and we have the city hall, and we have a lot of accomplishments. And I know it will take a lot of money and hard work, and you say, I don't want to go that for 20 years or 15 years down the road to pay for something. But we do that every day when we buy a new home, and we don't say, oh, I can't do that. And so as the councilman, I think the time is right now for all of you to start this project. And you may, and hopefully, you can, this can be your legacy on the council, that you started a project and that you could see it through to the end. And I know we have administration that has creative ideas on how to fund things. We own lots of property that if we're not going to use, that could help on funding it, and it can be done if you make this your goal. And so because I love kids and everything, I hope you'll vote to start the project, not know all the answers of how it's going to be finished, but the citizens of the city said yes, they voted for the sales tax to start in financing it, and I know you can find a way.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Not seen anyone come forward, we'll move on. Next up on the agenda is our consent agenda. Councilmembers may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. The two items we do have are approval of an event request from First Christian Church for their annual fall festival on Saturday, September 21st, from 8:00 to 4:00, to allow the closure of Seventh Street from Market to Court. And this has been reviewed, I think, by Chief Myers and approved. The other item was an appointment of Jennifer O'Donley to the tourism board as our city slash county representative. She would begin serving at January 1st, so...
She's actually, just a quick correction, she's going to begin serving now, and then she'll start a brand-new term effective January 1st. So she's going to finish that complete one.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda passes. We don't have any unfinished business tonight. For new business, we'll start with, the members of the Callaway 200 Committee will present to provide an update on their accomplishments and planned events and to request additional
Thank you for having us tonight. I know you have a full agenda, and I'm going to be brief, but if you have questions, feel free to ask them. On November 25th, I should introduce myself. I'm Susan Crum. I live at 809 Gross Place here in Fulton, and I'm co-chair of Callaway 200 with John Bell, who is sitting back here with me, and we have several other members of the committee present as well. On November 25th, 1820, Callaway became an official county in what was still a territory. We weren't even Missouri officially yet. You're well aware that our Callaway 200 Committee has been in the planning and fundraising stage for one and a half years. We hope you have been noticing the Callaway 200 logo, and in November, the celebration will officially begin. Our first event will be November 15th, 2019. That's our kickoff gala, which is featuring the Joe McBride Jazz Ensemble, a Fulton boy who is coming back home to perform for us. That's a ticketed event at Meadow Lake Country Club. May 29th through 31st in 2020, the Callaway 200 Celebration Weekend will be held, we hope, in downtown Fulton, and we have not yet officially requested that, but we, at our last meeting, decided that that really is going to be, we think, the best place to hold that celebration with your permission. And we will come back with a formal proposal at the correct time. In November 2020, we will be holding a closing event near the Katy Trail, just south of Old Summit, and that's going to be a joint celebration by Callaway Coal and Boone Counties, and that one's still very much in the formative stages. We will also bring a Callaway 200 presence to annual community events throughout the county throughout 2020. Jeff Stone joined our committee after we met with you in March, and we've really benefited from his active participation and helpful ideas. We welcome the input of everyone on the council as we progress through our planning and our activity. When we visited with you in the past, you wanted to know how and where we are securing funding, because of course, we got started with a lot of interested people and zero financial backing. The financial information in your packet shows you our progress as of August 8th. That's our financial report and our budget, and that is a two-year budget. I can add some information to that. The committee has talked with the county commissioners, with the city of Vaz, with Kingdom City, and tonight, a member just at the summit board while we were here. We have secured $2,000 from Kingdom City. That does not show on your report because it just came in, and Callaway County's 2019 pledge is $10,000, which matches yours. Major donor funds from businesses and individuals continue to come in and have recently topped $20,000, so we're well on our way to our budget there. The Henry Rifle Raffle is going on now until the gala, when the drawing will be held. Gala ticket sales are going very well, and we expect that event will probably sell out, and those tickets are being handled by the chamber. The Callaway Tourism Grant that you see on the budget under income is directly funding website development and some other marketing initiatives, and the website will launch in October. Merchandise sales will kick off at the gala, and we are beginning to make procurement decision... Well, we are making procurement decisions and purchases at this time. We thank you for your generous financial support of our efforts. Your initial contribution provided much-needed startup funds. We will be incurring payments shortly for our two musical groups at our two, first two events, so we hope that you will be able to forward the remainder of your budgeted funds to help us prepare for that. Looking ahead, we'd also ask you to please consider matching or even increasing your support in 2020. We're excited about our plans. We're excited about the enthusiasm that we're seeing. Our committee keeps growing because people want to be a part of this, and so we're, we have really positive feelings about where this is going. Do you have questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the transparency here and letting us know exactly where this money's all going. That's fantastic.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As a liaison to the committee, I'd like at this time to make a motion for us to disburse another $5,000 check during this fiscal year to Callaway 200 Committee.
So we've already committed to that $5,000, right?
We've budgeted it.
We've budgeted it.
We just had not committed to it yet.
And they're asked, are they asking for another five on top of that? No.
They're asking for more next year.
Maybe in 2020. Okay.
That's not the future, next year.
Make sure I understand it. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. All right, cut him a chat. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is council concerns. I'll start to my left tonight. This is just an opportunity for councilmembers to bring up a topic of concern. Councilwoman Seibacher.
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know there's a lot of things on the agenda that are important to our community, and if we could see this much enthusiasm and participation on a regular basis, it would make our jobs a lot easier. We don't sadly, but tonight, I do just want to thank you for that.
I would echo that as well. It's great to see this.
It is.
In fact, I'm going to take a picture.
Got your phone.
Councilman Sanders, if you have any concerns. Councilwoman Reclu.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilwoman Stone, everybody smile.
Looks like a video to me, Mayor.
I just wanted to acknowledge, the city council went to the Missouri Municipal League Conference, the annual conference, last week, and we had a very large group that went due to the support of the city and the support of the administration here. We were one of the larger groups in terms of representatives of our councils there, and we were, it was known, it was recognized by many of the other communities just how active and involved and engaged of a city council that you have in learning and knowing what's going on in the state and just, just learning as much as we possibly can through the various educational opportunities there, and it was through the support of the city. So thank you.
Yeah, that's always a good chance for us to learn and bounce ideas off of other councils in other cities, and it's a, we have a little fun too, but it's really a great learning time. I'm proud of all of us. That's great. Thank you, Jeff. Councilman Braun.
I am good, thank you.
Councilwoman Pace-Snoke.
I have nothing.
And Councilman Shiverdecker.
Next.
All right. Moving on to resolutions, Councilwoman Seibacher, if you would present resolution number 3352 that was tabled.
And actually, since it's already been presented, and we actually have a motion and a table, or I'm sorry, a motion and a second to move it forward, we just need one to move it off the table if that is your desire.
So if anyone would care to pull that off the table?
We'll go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion to pull resolution number 3352 off the table for discussion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. So if, if it's appropriate, if Kyle could refresh us on this a little bit, the need for repairs and improvements.
Do you want to go ahead and just take a quick load on everyone in favor removing it from the table?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Courtney.
You're good.
So all those in favor pulling it off the table, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay, Courtney.
Thank you very much. We're good.
That's why she's a certified county or city clerk.
All right, everybody. Sewer, inflow and infiltration, and this contract with Visu Sewer. We, we put out to bid a sewer rehabilitation project. I say project, it's actually items, as you see in your packet. There's, there's a bunch of tools to help prevent stormwater from getting into the sanitary sewer system. If you look at the PowerPoint above, you can kind of see, see a house, you see a stormwater system and the sanitary sewer system, and many ways that, that stormwater can make its way into sanitary sewer system. When it does so, it inundates our system, causes overflows, backups. If it makes its way all the way down to the sewer treatment plant, then we're either overwhelmed with sewer treatment plant or having to process that water down there, which, which costs, costs extra dollars. So we've, we've also been mandated by DNR to tighten up our sanitary sewer system, so there isn't all this dumping into us and we're causing all these backups and, and overflow. So we have, we have some money budgeted to help tackle this. Usually, it's a line item every year, and so the idea was, was to, let's get a contract for any tool that we can use to go out and tackle this issue. The first thing is identifying the problem and figuring out how to fix it, which, which tool to use. So it's camera in the line, sticking a camera in it, seeing what's, seeing what's wrong. If that line's good, check it off the list and go, go upstream and keep moving forward. So, there we go. This is kind of a summary of why we care. Wastewater treatment plant capacity is 8 million gallons a day. When it, when it rains, we exceed 12 million gallons a day. The, we used to have two outfalls into Stinson Creek. One is a big lagoon down by the wastewater treatment plant. DNR has taken that away for water quality reasons in Stinson Creek, so we no longer have that capacity. Like I said, there's basement backups and Stinson Creek water quality. A few years back, we had Burns &amp; McDonald come in and meter the sanitary sewer system and identify the areas that are, that are worse. To no surprise, most of it's in downtown area. I know this looks like a big glob up here, but we call it our heat map. So what they did is, anything, the darker red is the worst the area is. So again, the big dark red area with a little bit of, with a little bit of orange in the middle is mainly kind of downtown, kind of surrounding area.
So, I'm sorry, Kyle, come back up.
Yeah.
Please. So the red is...
The red is where...
Issued, areas with issues.
Where, yeah, the redder it is, the worse it is. So, Site...
For those of us that are colorblind, are there different shades of red on that screen?
There's...
Or is there one big red blob?
Not, not really. It's zoomed, it's zoomed in a little bit, and there's not a whole lot of color there to distinguish the red, but there is, there are tables that I've got to tell you which red is a little bit worse than the other.
I see two different colors besides...
That's all I see, Jeff, so it's not just you, and I'm not colorblind.
Well, no, I am.
I have, I have a blue shirt on.
Site 8 is, is the worst area. It's just, just east of city hall here, kind of between 10th Street, I'll say 10th Street, Business 54, Vine Street on down to Second Street, so all, all that area that, so Site 8 is the highest ranking area, delivers over 2 million gallons a day to the wastewater treatment plant during rain events, so just that little area alone is a problem. The stars that you see on the map are areas that we've experienced known, known backups or bypasses to the system, so that's, that's what those stars indicate. We also have known basement backups and surcharges. I know in the, in the description, we talked about, I talk about the Burns &amp; McDonald study, and the other thing, the other thing that we're trying to tackle or that we're, that we're submitting to you guys is we have other areas that we've had sewer backup into people's homes. So as I said, the stars indicate where backups have occurred, okay? This area is kind of just south of downtown, along Ravine, kind of bound between Business 54 and Ravine Street. You see all the stars on there. The, the bigger stars in green are claims that we've had on our insurance that are at least over a couple thousand dollars, so...
Missed a star on Davana.
Got a problem there, do you?
I know I had you on the list. I know I had you on the list.
Years ago.
I'm surprised it's not in there. That, this is, I should say, the last, over the last three years, so since '16 and about. So I don't know when your backup was, Jeff.
Before then, thank you.
Another area that we've had several issues is along Randall, kind of all, all along Randall up in there, you see all of the various stars, so, kind of over, a few over there on St. Louis Road, kind of just off of St. Louis Road, Lynn Street, Bradley. This is up, another spot, troublesome spot up there, Metal Lark, Douglas Boulevard, and then we've got kind of just south of St. Eunice Road and east of Bluff Street. So those are the areas that, that we've experienced the backups in the last three years, and so we proposed not only that Site 8 for our I&amp;I metered area that Burns &amp; McDonald did that study on to remediate that worst area that we've got right there, but also these backups. Combining, combining those two, we're looking at 800,000 to a million dollars.
One thing about like the line that's down on Randall, it's behind the houses. It's not out in the street, and lots of the houses down there have put fences, done landscaping, have buildings back there that were constructed over our sewer line, and if we were, wanted to replace that sewer line by digging, it's going to cause the neighborhood serious stress that I just should not get into. But the method that they're proposing is the contractor goes in through manholes, and they go manhole to manhole, and they, they drag a sock through the... And they, they drag a sock through the, through the sewer main, and then they inflate it. And so that's pretty much, there's no digging with it. And the, the new process allows us to do better connections where it comes through the service taps, or the service mains that go to the house. And they're able to do some grounding, all additional ways to keep additional stormwater out.
One other, one other thing I'd like to submit too is that the contract with Viziu Sewer is, it's line item based. Essentially, what we would do is issue purchase orders off of those line items. So really, the contract with Viziu Sewer, if you approve that contract with Viziu Sewer, that's not saying, hey, go spend a million dollars. That's, that's, that's not what's in the contract with Viziu Sewer. Okay? So that's, that's just saying, yes, we're going to contract with Viziu Sewer because they were the lowest on all these line items for all the tools that we can use to do it. We would have to come back, come back to you. Or if, if, if any, anything is over any budgetary amount or not approved tonight, we would have to come back to you to do that. So, you know, we have, I know we have $300,000 in the budget for INI. So, you know, if, if that's what, what the city council prefers to do, let's spend $300,000, not a million dollars. You can still approve, you know, by approving Viziu Sewer's contract, you're not spending a million dollars, okay? You can, you can provide that guidance tonight in meetings to come. So I'd like to issue that.
Kyle, how much of this work could realistically be done before the end of the year? Of, of the entire scope of what you're proposing?
Right now, I can't, I cannot tell you that for sure right now, Jeff. I can tell you that a couple weeks ago, Viziu Sewer thought that they could, could do all the work by the, by the end of the year. But, you know, that was, that was when they were vying for the job, you know, so. And they, they did strongly say that we would need a purchase order right away to do so. I do not feel at this moment that, that they would be able to do, you know, 800,000 or a million dollars worth. I do not feel that.
So we would need to be looking at, at putting money into next year's budget and be looking at a contract to...
Well, I, I think there should be money in there for years to come in the budget for INI remediation. As, as you look at that heat map, there's, there's just, there's a lot of clay tile pipe in this town. That's, that's the most prevalent. It's been in the ground for a while, it cracks, you know, so. And as Mr. Johnson said, there's plenty of areas that are, that are in, in behind people's homes and not out in the streets, so it's not very accessible to get to.
Right.
So is this identification or identification and fix?
It's identification and fix. Part of it will be just identification on this first realm to get ready for next year's. But we have already identified where a bunch of the basement backups has been. The crews are out there now on root, rootsaw on the, the lines just to keep it going. And as, like Kyle said, it's clay. So as your infrastructure's getting older and your roots keep going in, they're getting bigger.
Sure.
And as, and as long as the pipe is in good mechanical strength, they can line it. If you wait till it's not, then you replace it, so. It's good in the backyard, like Mr. Johnson said, it's good underneath pavement where you don't have to tear the whole road up. So you're, you're kind of in the, in the same spot you was about 12 years ago with an aging waterline system. And I know several of y'all was on the council back then. And we was fixing leaks all over this town. The gas department fixing leaks, electric, everybody, street department. And we're just really not wanting the sewer to get in that kind of shape. We want it to be reliable. And off the savings, off the rattle, this station, we seen a, a chance to come in here and really do something significant and straighten up the sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I do think it's worth mentioning that, you know, the city owns the main. We do not own the service. And so there's only so much that we can do, we can fix, we can fix the main. You know, that's our obligation to fix and make sure that, okay, if there's a backup, was it the main's problem or was it the service's problem, okay? What this is proposing is not a full, you know, there's, there's probably about as much line when you add it all together, pretty close to even amount when you, when you take laterals. So customer lines going to the city main, that's a lot of pipe in the ground. So this is not addressing the pipe that comes from the house to the main. Now, some of this does, there's that connection point, there's a little, little gray area there because there's a connection point, you know, to the main. And one of the items that, that was bid is trying to seal up that connection. But if roots are coming in from the service line, you know, if you, at your house, if you've got a bunch of trees and clay tile pipe and it's coming through your service line, those roots can really infiltrate that pipe and, and get all the way down into the main. So just, we've, we have seen before where we've lined and fixed the main, but there's still a backup because of the service coming into the main. There's so many roots coming into it. So, you know, that's an issue that, that at some point, we'll have to touch on.
As part of this project, are there going to be opportunities for y'all to recognize those areas as you get to those and maybe work with the homeowner?
Yes, it's, it's our hope that while they're cambering, if they see, you know, a root ball coming out of somebody's service, we would like to notify the homeowner that while they might not already know they're having problems.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Kind of give them a heads up so maybe they can budget and plan for, for getting that repaired. And just for everybody's information, we've got about 100 miles of sewer line in this town. That's about what we've got, footage-wise. And a few years ago, we had a lot of brick manholes. We built bricks in this town, so therefore we had brick manholes. We did line those brick manholes and, and stopped some. And over there by Old Jeff City Road is like Region 7. It's a very small area that was hot on the heat map. And we went and repaired all the point repairs we could in that spot. And then we remetered it and then waited on the rain. And we cut about 47% of it out. So it, it, it does not cut 100% out, but we did do a test run on Region 7. And we cut about 47% out.
Kyle, is there a connection, my apologies?
Oh, go ahead, Jeff, go ahead.
Is there a, is there a correlation between the work that was done over on Jefferson Street and that, all that drainage and all of that, has that improved? Or is that separate? I mean, I know it's connected, but is that type of work? Can we say that that type of work that we're doing on the roads and the drains and all of that is also helping some of this? Or is it separate?
You know, I can't give you any hard numbers to, to back that up, you know, without doing a, remetering that area, but...
We could find a mystery pipe in that area. We need to fix it, but that was something uncovered during Kyle's street department's work. We found a, I don't know, French drain of some sort that appeared to be connected. And that was, that was right there.
I just know we're planning a lot of street work also, so I'm trying to say that, hey, we're doing a lot of different things to solve this problem.
Well, last year, we cambered and fixed all the spots on the overlay areas. We didn't want, and Kyle's been really great to work with between utilities and, and he'll be, he gives a heads up of what they're looking at overlaying.
Yep.
And last year, we made an effort to make sure that we made...